Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Summit Common Council Meeting Experience where it's 82 degrees and we're screaming at you and some of the technology works. That's a joke. We're in the -- so AC in City Hall comes on in the middle of this month, so we look forward to that. And our City Clerk's office and the folks who have been here for the last several weeks are working incredibly hard to get our council chamber upgrades complete, and we're thankful, very thankful for their work. So let's get started. We will start with the adequate notice compliance statement, please. Madam Clerk.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice dated December 15th, 2022, which was probably distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and the back of the room.
Okay, and let's call the roll, please.
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Fox? Ms. -- I'm here, sorry. Ms. Hairston?
Present.
Here.
Ms. Hamlet? Dr. Levine?
Here.
Mr. Miniger?
Here.
Council President Vartan.
Present. Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance, and for that I will call on Keely Hayman from Mountain Valley Emergency Communications Center.
Is he walking in the middle or just up here?
Wherever you want to be, right there is good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council President, could we call Councilwoman Hamlet?
Yeah.
She can't get in. Yeah, she said she can't get in.
Yeah, let's try that.
This seems to be having more than feedback.
Yeah, we're getting a little bit of feedback as well, so we're working on that, I think. Okay, so we'll go to -- we'll move on to the explanatory note regarding closed session and hearings and comments. Not to give you too many things to do.
I know, sorry.
Just take your time.
A closed session meeting, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36, Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name, address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give or email a copy to the City Clerk's Office at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. The approval of the minutes are going to be pushed to the next meeting on April 18th. So I will jump into the reports. As you can see, Mayor Radus is not here this evening, and City Administrator Rogers is not here this evening, so I'm going to go right ahead with my council president's report. So can I ask Tammy to help me out with that? We're going to have a little, very quick, going to crank through it. I know it's warm.
Except it's gone.
Go to the bottom, all the way to the left.
Nope, not that one.
Put the blue and green circle, that one.
Okay, so next slide, please, there, Tammy. Okay, so at the beginning of the year, at the reorganization meeting, I spoke about what you can expect from council this year. Actions that we take will fit into one of the three categories, one of the three buckets that you can see up there on the screen. First, ensure and enhance health and safety. Second, responsibly manage our fiscal resources. And third, pursue the goals that are set forth in the master plan. So here's some of the very specific initiatives and commitments that council outlined for this year, 2023. First, continue to address vehicle thefts, improve pedestrian and traffic safety, ensure utility companies complete paving work, assist the unhoused population in Summit, adopt a responsible municipal budget, reach decisions about Broad Street West redevelopment and Maple Street, open the dog park at the transfer station, initiate a plan for rehabilitation of playgrounds, continue construction of the Summit Park Line, support and construct affordable housing, and determine next steps for emergency communications. That one was not in our presentation in January because we did not know we were going to have to do that. I'll explain more in a little bit. So, and the reason why I'm doing this now is because we've had a first quarter, we've gone through a quarter of this year, and I think we have made progress toward a lot of these goals, and I want to outline specifically what some of that progress is and update on where we are. So on addressing vehicle thefts and attempted thefts, we have a 50% decrease over last year at this time. I want to thank especially Chief Zagorski and the Summit Police Department, but also the community at large. It's largely due to the targeted patrols and enforcement by our police, but also the community partnership to actually remove your keys from your car and lock it when you are not driving it. We have license plate reader technology that is already deployed in some parts of the city, but we will continue to invest in that when we discuss our capital budget at the next meeting. And then the Safety and Health Committee continues to support the police in this effort. So next slide, improve pedestrian and traffic and vehicle safety. So unfortunately, three pedestrians struck in crosswalks in the first quarter of this year. That's unacceptable. Summons were issued in two accidents, an arrest was made in a hit-and-run accident that was the third one, and that arrest was assisted very much by the license plate reader system that I talked about in the last slide. We increased pay last year, and we now, this year, have a full complement of crossing guards, so that's really good news because when a crossing guard isn't there, a police officer is diverted from what they're doing to go and do that crossing guard shift or post. We have agreements executed with Union County for seven new flashing beacons. Those are going to be coming and installed hopefully soon. We have, at the last meeting, approved an always stop for Blackburn Road and Prospect Street. Sidewalks are being added on Prospect Street. Hobart Project is to begin soon, and we have applied for a grant that will help us to pay for sidewalks on Mount Vernon and Kemplatte Boulevard as well. The Safety and Health and Capital Projects Committees continue to focus on the three Es of pedestrian and traffic safety: education, engineering, and enforcement. So next, ensure utilities repair roads when work is complete. So at the last council meeting, we saw PSENG presented. We're going to have NJ American Water joining us in May. Major infrastructure updates, basically, infrastructure work is happening everywhere in town, but as it makes its way through the downtown, all you -- we're coordinating with all utilities to make sure that when PSENG is doing their thing ripping up the road, other people, other utilities can do that work at the same time. The utilities are providing information to the Engineering and Communications Office on work schedules so that we can try to get that information, excuse me, get that information out as quickly as we can. Paving happens 60 to 90 days after the work is complete to allow the road to settle. That's different from the 30 days that we thought it was before. And a good point raised at the last meeting was to determine in August whether work should start, you know, or wait until the next spring so that that way we're not waiting almost the entire spring to repave a street that's just been ripped up at the end of August or September. So moving on to assisting our unhoused population. Mayor Radus brought together a working group of elected officials, interfaith council, healthcare professionals, and the nonprofit community. At the last meeting, we heard from Dr. Callahan, the Director of Homeless Prevention at the DCA. We plan to discuss a resolution authorizing our application to the county continuum of care at our next council meeting. We plan to draft short, mid, and long-term goals related to our unhoused population. We're going to be looking for funding wherever we possibly can from the county, the state, and the federal government, and the Safety and Health Committee is supporting this effort as well. So adopt a responsible municipal budget. So the county budget is flat with no increase, so that's great news. The less great news is that our apportionment is up slightly from last year. So though the county budget will stay flat, Summit will see a small increase in our county obligation. The school budget is increasing by 1.98%. The municipal budget is to be introduced at our next council meeting on April 18th. The budget hearing, by law, has to happen 28 days after that, so that'll be at our council meeting on Tuesday, May 16th. So there's a council meeting in between. Normally, when we introduce ordinances, it's the next meeting is the hearing, but that's not the case with the budget. The cost drivers, which we've talked about many times here at council meetings before, are debt, our health benefits, and pension obligations. Those are the main three things driving costs this year. In good news, we did just recently approve a new credit card processor for the city, so thank you to Tammy and thank you to the Parking Services Agency because that's likely to save us about $100,000 a year. So the City Administrator, CFO, and our Finance Committee are hard at work, and this is, once again, a very difficult budget year. So moving on, determine the path for Broad Street West. So at the beginning of the year, our contract with the city planner Topology was renewed in a unanimous vote. Meetings have been held to update council on the developer progress to create a proposal that, one, complies with the master plan and redevelopment plan, two, emphasizes onsite parking and affordable housing, and, three, has strong and transparent financials. So a preliminary proposal was discussed by council and our financial professionals. The Broad Street West Financial Advisory Committee that we created met to discuss baseline financial viability, and I think within a couple of weeks, we will have a solid update for the community about which way we think we're going, if it's financially viable or not, to continue along this path with Broad Street West. So we expect an update soon on that. Moving on, reach a decision about Maple Street seasonal closure. So PSENG kind of made the decision for us. So that major gas infrastructure work that's happening in the downtown really doesn't make closing Maple Street feasible at all this year. The Capital Projects Committee is charged with consideration of options for seasonal closure in 2024 and beyond. The next step is to reengage stakeholders, and we expect an update, I think, in the second half of this year on that. I'm cranking because it's hot and I want to keep moving. So we'll post this after. So opening the dog park at the transfer station. So the plan is to open in 2023. The fence is the next step. The Capital Projects Committee will provide an update on that shortly. Initiate a playground replacement project. So we have, we had an extensive playground plan developed and that was received. The costs for all these playgrounds, we know that they need to be done, the costs for all of them were much higher than anticipated. So the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee is working to reduce costs, add value, and make a fundraising plan, and I think we should expect an update on that in the second quarter of this year. The first up, the highest priority, is going to be maybe playground, and there is going to be an emphasis on accessibility on that playground as well. So moving along, advanced construction of the Summit Park Line. So the pedestrian bridge, as you can see, has been installed over Morris Avenue. The bridge was named for the Lord family because of their very, very generous donation. Significant grant funding has also been received, $500,000 from the state government, $250,000 from the federal government. Parkline Foundation, Capital Projects Committee, will continue work in consultation with staff, neighbors, and does require council approval. I was talking to some neighbors about this this weekend, and there are some, there are some things that I think do need to continue to be addressed, and like we've done before, we'll address those things, and then when council feels comfortable moving forward, we'll move forward with that. And then support rehabilitation and construction of affordable housing. So the 2022 progress report was provided to the Affordable Housing Committee and council in February of this year. Four new affordable units were taken online, and website upgrades were completed. So you can now fill out basically a preliminary application on the website. There's a phone number that a person will answer. That's significant progress. We are considering possible deed restriction with a new construction incentive for a local nonprofit with housing. We expect an update on that in the second quarter. There is an RFP anticipated for two additional units on Ashwood Court. That's kind of on the backside of the new Habitat for Humanity project, and it's on the court side of Ashwood Court. And then the Summit Housing Authority is in the process of their RAD II financing, so we will get an update from them hopefully soon as well. Determine next steps for emergency communications. So this was unexpected, that New Providence would vote to withdraw from the Mountain Valley Dispatch Center. We've had a good partnership with New Providence and with Milburn and with Springfield as a customer of the Emergency Communications Center. It allows us to share, sharing services in this way allows us to have some higher level of control while also collaborating with other communities that are similar to ours. New Providence's decision was unexpected and disappointing. So I'm a former EMT myself, and the folks over there probably listening to my voice now recognize who I am through the radio. So we're working closely with the City Administrator, our Health and Safety Committee, and then our professionals in Mountain Valley, the county, and our neighbors to determine what will come next here. We are going to perform a cost-benefit analysis of all those options, and we will communicate clearly about that to the community. I think we will expect a decision on the course of action for the community by the end of the third quarter, really at the latest. It should be sooner than that. And then I just wanted to put this in there. We've been focusing on access to council members. We want to make sure that everyone feels like their voice is being heard, and we want to hear from the community, so our email addresses continue to be on the city website. We've had six Facebook Live events so far with council members. They're highly successful, I think. 500 average views was what I put in here before, the one that we had last week with council members Levine and Fox, which was really popular. It was like 1.3 thousand views, and I don't mean to sound surprised, it was just more than I've ever had, so I'm a little jealous, but that's okay. I'm writing an update, an outline of what you can expect at the council meetings before, and then I write a quick summary of the council meetings the next day after. We are expecting to get some office space in City Hall, the office that used to be the courts, where council's trying to take over basically annex that space that's through there. And so we expect concept plans by May, and then we will also have a table at the farmer's market on May 21st with, and some Department of Community Programs events as well to answer questions and spread information. So that is really it, just in time. That's it for my council president's report. Yes?
Councilwoman Hamlet called me. She's on the phone, she can't get in. So can we see what's going on?
Okay.
We're looking into it right now.
Yeah, we're working on that. Okay.
You're going to check where it is. Hold on one second.
I'm going to take a quick drink of water, and I'll say happy Passover, happy Easter, and a blessed Ramadan to all those who are celebrating this month. So that's really it for my council president's report. I want to give Nicole one minute to try to -- yeah.
Nicole's trying to log you in. Do you hear? Yeah, she's trying to log you in right now. Hold on.
I don't know what they did.
Just be prepared.
Is that working?
You're on?
Hold on. Councilmember Hamlet?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a reason why we can't do video, or is that too much to ask right now? There we go. Are we online? Hi, guys.
You have to turn your video on.
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
Councilmember Hamlet?
Yeah, you're there.
Perfect.
We got it. Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Are we good there?
Can you see me and hear me?
Yes.
Yep, we can see you. Okay.
Great.
We're moving on to mayoral proclamations.
I'm sorry, can I just, I lost the first 20 minutes of the meeting, 25 minutes, so can we just recap? I couldn't see or hear anything. Can I just catch it in?
I went over the, I went over the presentation that I sent you on the weekend, which was, we did the pledge, we did the president's report, and that was really it. So we're moving on to mayoral proclamations, and I'll call on our council president.
Do we have a chance to respond to your presentation, or should we do that during our?
We should do that later. We're moving on to mayoral proclamations.
Moving on?
Yep.
Okay.
Just, I'm sorry.
So, so Mayor, what?
Is there any volume on the TV or no? Is that?
We're going to try to keep the meeting going, so let's work on that while we do the mayoral proclamations.
Okay. That's fine.
Good evening, everyone. I am Councilwoman Susan Hairston, and I'm here on behalf of our mayor as pro temp to read a proclamation to, ooh, sorry about the feedback. Our first presentation is to the court-appointed Special Advocates of Union County, otherwise known as CASA. And if you all are not familiar with CASA, you should be. It is an amazing group of volunteers who see after our most vulnerable children in Union County, and it's a state and a nationwide program for children who are abused or removed from their home or in foster care. And this is Child Abuse Prevention Month, and so on behalf of the mayor and city council, and I should say, the interim executive director, Erica Fisher-Castlander, was really excited about having her team be here, but they had a joyous event happen. A baby was born, and so they're not able to be here to accept this, but I am really pleased to read this. So whereas the city of Summit in the state of New Jersey recognizes the problem of child abuse and neglect and is committed to helping its victims, and whereas the court-appointed Special Advocates of Union County recruits, trains, supports, and supervises community volunteers as advocates for children who have been removed from their homes due to neglect or abuse, and whereas CASA has a record of public service protecting the state and well-being of Union County's foster children, defending them from harm and ensuring they are provided with the court-ordered services they need, and whereas CASA establishes and maintains effective relationships with the Family Court, the Division of Child Protection and Permanency, Child Placement Review Board, Office of the Public Defender, Legal Aid, and other child-serving agencies in order to create a cooperative environment in which best to meet the needs of children. Now therefore, I, on behalf of Nora G. Radus, mayor of the city of Summit, do hereby proclaim that April 2023 be recognized as Court-appointed Special Advocates of Union County Month in the city of Summit, and I urge all residents to become aware of the work and mission of CASA of Union County. Let it be known that we support the education efforts to raise awareness of the CASA program at the local level and the need for community members to provide a voice for the children in foster care. So as a former foster parent, I know the amazing work that is done by foster parents right here in Summit, and so it is our pleasure to acknowledge this Union County CASA Month. All right, moving on.
We're going to take a five and try to figure out what's going on.
Thank you so much.
Did she?
I know there are. There are a lot of folks in Summit, so.
Did she?
They're busy.
Are we okay with the audio?
I guess. It sounds better.
Are you ready for me to?
I think we can keep going. Let's try. Let's try to keep going. Sorry about this, everybody.
How are we doing?
Oh, she's right here. She's right at the door. It's okay.
Yeah, let's keep going.
Okay, so our next proclamation is to our emergency, Mountain Valley Emergency Communication Center, and I know we have a big team here who is led by the executive director, Keely Hayman. May I ask all of the representatives from Mountain Valley, come on up. We'll stand right here for the reading of this proclamation, but we want everybody to see who keeps us safe and keeps things moving when disaster happens. So whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and EMS personnel is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who contact the Mountain Valley Emergency Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical services by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators of the Mountain Valley Emergency Communication Center have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year, now therefore I, on behalf of Nora Radus, mayor of the city of Summit, do hereby proclaim that April 9th through the 15th be recognized as National Public Safety Telecommuters Week. And so we'd like to give a round of applause to. Is in charge of this amazing group I got to hear about personally when I was on the Safety Committee, and so we are really happy to present this to you, and we're going to ask everybody to come up front here and gather around, and we're going to get a picture. everybody to come up front here and gather around, and we're gonna get a picture.
Did we lose her?
She was there.
Where'd she go?
She was in camera.
She's there. There we are. Okay, we're good.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you, Council President Pro Tem. Thank you, Keely. Thank you to Harriet from CASA. Wonderful. Okay, moving on to ordinances for hearing. And Madam Clerk, would you read the first from Finance?
Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance to allow the city to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. State law establishes two limits to what the city can increase in their budget, two caps. On the revenue side of the budget, property tax increases are limited to 2% over the prior year's tax levy, and on the expenses side of the budget, appropriation increases are limited to 3.5% over the prior year's appropriations. This ordinance deals with that appropriations limit. It allows for an increase of appropriations up to that limit, and then any difference between the actual final appropriations amount and that 3.5% increase amount, we still will be able to utilize in the event of an unforeseen circumstance because we will be banking that. No actual money is sitting in a bank, but we are reserving that leftover appropriations increase amount for an unexpected future need up to two budget years in the future. We are not planning to exceed this cap. This is an important step that the city takes every year, giving us that extra appropriations wiggle room should we ever need it. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
A second?
Okay, the hearing is open. We'll start with councilmembers. Comments? Comments from the community? Okay, I think we're gonna close that hearing. All right, and we'll move on to the second one. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Properties, Subsection 7-25.4, Regulations.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I think we're gonna have this one read by Councilmember Miniger, right?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that formally adds Juneteenth to the list of free parking holidays in Summit. A federal holiday as of 2019, Juneteenth will join 10 other holidays during which there is no parking fee at pay stations or parking meters in the city. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
And do we have a second? I can second that. Okay. We're open, the hearing is open on this. We'll start with councilmembers. None?
Sorry.
All right, members of the public? Nope. Free parking. Makes sense. Okay. We'll close the, we'll close the hearing on that one as well. Okay. Moving on to ordinances for final consideration. We've got a couple. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This first one is an ordinance to allow the city to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap bank. Having closed the hearing just a moment ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we will take a roll call vote on this, right?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet? Can you unmute?
We can't, we can't hear you.
Yeah. Oh, the, yeah, the microphone.
It was working before.
Can you hear us?
Can't hear you.
We can't hear you. You must be on mute. I don't see your audio. She could hear us, we can't hear her.
The volume is up. It was working before. Yeah.
Okay.
Does a thumbs up work?
I don't know.
Matt? I don't think so.
Does a thumbs up work? Does thumbs up mean aye?
No, you have to be able to hear it.
Yeah, I don't see an audio option for her.
Is there a phone option?
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we have a?
Yeah, you're gonna have her call in.
Yeah.
Do you want me to call her and tell her to call in?
Let's do that, yeah. I think, I think two people are calling her.
I'm not calling.
Nicole, who's calling her?
Oh.
I'm calling?
I'm just telling her.
I'm calling? Yeah?
Let's.
It'll be on the speaker.
Let's have Nicole on the speaker.
No, I'm just gonna tell her to call in. Oh, I'm gonna tell her to call in.
Yeah.
She's gonna call.
Okay, so what's gonna happen is everything up, and we're gonna do it by phone, because this isn't working. We can't hear you.
We can see her. You both.
Okay, so Nicole's gonna call you. Oh, you can hear her?
No, through his phone.
So Nicole's gonna call you right now and is on the phone, so hang on, she's gonna call right back, okay?
Councilmember Hamlet, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, how are you? So do you want me to do roll call again?
Uh, yes.
Okay. This is for the ordinance to exceed municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Ms. Allen?
Aye, but you, we just hung up the phone.
What?
The phone went dead. She said the phone went dead?
Okay. Can you hear me? This is for the ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Roll call. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
I heard aye.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Council President Vartan?
Aye.
Nicole, can you tell Councilwoman Hamlet to put her Zoom on mute?
Councilmember Hamlet, can you mute yourself on Zoom so there's no feedback? Councilmember Hamlet?
Good. She's muted.
All right, well, painstakingly, that ordinance passes. Okay, we're gonna attempt to continue to move along. We've got another ordinance for final consideration from Community Programs and Parking Services. Please read this one, Madam Clerk.
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-25, Regulations for the Movement and Parking of Traffic on Municipal Property and Board of Education Properties, Subsection 7-25.4, Regulations.
Okay, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. This is an ordinance that formally adds Juneteenth to the list of free parking holidays in Summit. Having closed the hearing just a moment ago, I move this ordinance for final adoption.
A second?
Thank you. We'll take a roll call vote on this.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet? Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Council President Vartan?
Aye. Okay, and that ordinance is adopted as well. We're moving on to ordinances for introduction, and would you read that one from Capital Projects and Community Services, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance by the Common Council of the City of Summit, County of Union, New Jersey, repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 27, flood prevention and protection of the Code of the City of Summit, to adopt new floodplain management regulations, associated maps, and designate a floodplain administrator in providing for severability and an effective date.
Okay, and to read this, Councilmember Levine.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to please introduce ordinance number 100112, repealing and replacing in its entirety Chapter 27. This is a state-mandated floodplain ordinance, and we are following the state's model ordinance, which has been approved by both the NJDEP and FEMA. The state has set a deadline to adopt this new ordinance of May 2nd, 2023. The three main things this ordinance will do, or can do, is, number one, the formal designation of a floodplain administrator, which will be none other than our city engineer; number two, it will make the issuance of a floodplain development permit a prerequisite for any application submitted to zoning or our construction division; and third, it will establish a method for obtaining a variance from the requirements of the ordinance, which will be handled by the Planning and Zoning Board. The hearing date for this ordinance will be on April 18th of this year. I move this ordinance for introduction.
I second.
Okay, we will take, thank you very much. We will take a roll call vote on that.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet?
So this is just the introduction, so we'll have opportunity for questions and discussions at the hearing on the 18th. So, so what we're authorizing is whether or not we will discuss it.
I don't know, so I.
Thank you.
Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
Council President Vartan?
Aye. Okay, and that hearing will be set at the next council meeting on, on the 18th. The motion carries. We're moving on to resolutions, and we've got a few from Finance. Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Council President. And if I can bundle these next three financial resolutions together, they all deal with accrued time payouts.
That sounds great to me.
These are numbers 1028, 10280, sorry, 10310, and 10311, and these resolutions authorize accrued time payout to three retiring or soon-to-be-departing employees, two from the police department with payouts in the amount of $5,306.80 and $640.59, respectively, and one from the fire department in the amount of $1,476.72. Per the agreements in the police and fire contracts, they are allowed to accrue time payouts up to a certain number of hours, and per our closed session discussion, I move that we adopt these three resolutions.
A second?
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. I did go, I did, I did skip that step. I skipped that step. I apologize. We have, let's go to Councilmember comments.
Thank you. So the one thing I'm trying to understand, Councilmember Miniger, can you please just walk me through the calculations? As a new council member, I'm trying to educate myself and the public on how we actually make these calculations regarding accrued time out. If you could just walk me through that, I spoke with Tammy about it briefly, but I'm truly just trying to understand. I feel like, before I asked Tammy the question today, I really didn't understand how to, how I look at this. And I think it would be important for the public to understand, so for, in this instance, I think it was 21 hours, so it was like 21 hours times his hourly rate, and then is there a cap on that?
There's a cap on the number of hours, and it applies to vacation.
No, is there a cap on the amount? Like, I'm just, I just was wondering if somebody could just walk me through a general calculation. It doesn't even have to be this one.
Sure.
Tammy?
CFO Baldwin.
Tammy?
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
The mic to you.
Yeah, and I know we kind of talked about it at like 5:00 on email tonight, Tammy, but I think it's really important to educate the public on this because a lot of times we see the information and we're not really sure what we're looking at, and I think it's important as councilmembers to understand exactly what we're looking at.
Okay, you can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so through you, Council President?
Yes.
Per the contracts for the FMBA and the PBA, they are allowed to accumulate a certain amount of hours of compensatory time. I said that wrong.
Compensatory.
Compensatory time, vacation time, and upon their resignation or retirement, they can be paid out. In the case that you're talking about, it was 21 hours of compensatory, oh my gosh, compensatory time?
You got it.
That was paid out to one member retiring from the fire department. Depending on the year of service, the contract dictates how many hours you are allowed to accumulate. So there is a cap on it depending on the year that you entered the service. So it's different, there's different caps depending on how many years of service you have and when you entered the service.
Got it. So then we went back and forth on one today. I can't remember which one it was, but I'm just trying to understand. So we have sort of a playbook when I can look at it and understand. I mean, obviously, trust everybody's doing the right thing, but I can't grasp it and understand it unless I truly understand the calculations.
And so what we do, just so everybody knows, is these are done through payroll. They're extra checks done through payroll, so when I sit down with the payroll supervisor, when it's time to submit the payroll, we go over the calculations initially. We go over them again to make sure that they match and that they're within the guidelines of the contract.
Okay. Thanks for explaining that, Tammy. I appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you, Tammy. Other councilmember comments? Comments from members of the public? Okay, now I think we're ready for a vote on this. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries and those resolutions are adopted. We're moving on to safety and health. There's one there. Councilmember Fox?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 10300, and this is, as discussed in closed session, this resolution appoints Shirley Kimi to the position of police officer. The safety committee met with Ms. Kimi a few weeks ago, and we were very impressed with her, and I enthusiastically moved this resolution, and her start date is effective April 6th.
I second.
Excellent. Comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Sorry?
Chief, do you know when her swearing-in will be? Okay.
Thursday at 1:30. She'll be sworn in. Welcome, welcome officer. Thank you.
That's great.
Okay, we've got one resolution from Law and Labor. Councilmember Hairston?
Through you, Council President, I am introducing Resolution ID 10279, authorizing execution of an annual license agreement use of Summit Sidewalk, All My Friends LLC, who is doing business as Barbacoa and Summit House Restaurant. This resolution will authorize the signing of a license agreement to the All My Friends, who we know as Summit House, to have consumption of alcoholic beverages in the public streets and for the purposes only for the sale of alcoholic beverages for consumption, and that a certain portion of the licensor's property consisting of the sidewalk area budding premises located at 395 Springfield Avenue and designated as filed by the license with the licenser, and for the place-to-place transfer of plenary retail consumption and a license number also known as the Sidewalk Cafe License. And it is at an annual charge based on the per-table basis in accordance with the city's existing per-table fee structure, and that would be in the amount of $404. It's payable in advance, and also the establishment had to show proof of a $1 million liquor liability policy. And so with that, I move this resolution forward for approval.
Okay, do we have a second? I can second that as well. Okay, comments from members of council? Okay, comments from members of council?
Just a question, possibly for city clerk, the charge now is just for the liquor license portion of this, and the rest of it is after the Sidewalk Cafe plan is approved, I believe that's right, how it works, and then there's an additional $404 for that same number of seats, is that right?
Through you, Council President, there's an initial application fee of $404 based off that per-table structure. This resolution is specific towards just the liquor license portion, which is also through that per-table structure amounting in $404, so it's two separate fees, this one is particular to liquor.
Perfect, thank you. And then through you, Council President.
One more from Councilmember Miniger?
Sure, one more, Council, through you, Council President, to Erin Schreger, the, at what point do we evaluate whether they have a four-foot gap between the edge of the table, sorry, the edge of the table and the edge of the sidewalk, as is the requirement for a sidewalk cafe to go in? Because I know we dealt a lot with that last year with parklets, so I just wanted to verify that was still happening.
Yes, through you, Council President, the first step is when they submit the application, it has a plan that would indicate it there, and then upon setup and periodic inspections, we'll make sure that that's being actually conformed to, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excellent. Councilmember Hamlet?
Yes, I just have a quick question, so does this mean that the sidewalk has been approved already? I wasn't sure.
That's what we're doing right now, right?
No, this is a liquor license.
The liquor license, I'm sorry.
For the liquor license.
So the cafe?
So the sidewalk?
Right.
Wait, so is the sidewalk cafe approved, or are we doing the liquor license?
So this is, this is just for the liquor license?
So wait, so that's fine, but my question is, has the sidewalk plan been approved yet for the cafe?
Yep.
Through you, Council President, so they submitted an application, part of that application is to also obtain this resolution, it's still in review, it actually goes to review for four different departments to make sure they're in compliance with everything, that's also part of that four-foot pedestrian walkway that Councilmember Miniger was talking about. This is just one of the requirements for their application, so as of right now, their sidewalk cafe is not approved, this is part of the requirement that they need.
Well, perfect, so two things I know that, one, we're going to ask you about that, so regardless of whether or not it's true, but whatever, either way, I have two around it. Number two, through Murphy, do we actually have to worry about these requirements there until 2024 regarding the addition to these stuff? Is it true, can I be, are we going to worry about this?
Can you repeat what she said?
The liquor license, it's a change in the extension.
Excuse me one sec, excuse me one sec, so for everybody, I appreciate all the help, I do, thank you. So for everybody at home, the question was related to whether, whether the sidewalk cafe has already been approved, right, and that, and the observation that there are already tables out there, right, and so I missed, did I miss a part of the question also?
No, but the second part is, you know, Murphy said they can have outdoor sidewalk cafes until 2024, so do we need to worry about all these, you know, a foot here, a foot there for sidewalk cafes and stuff, is that?
So I think, the question is, right, there, there was a, there was an executive order from Governor Murphy related to consumption of alcohol on the street and whether that affects our, this, this execution of a license agreement here, right, is that right?
I think I could, Governor Murphy, my understanding of it from my recollection is that was extended till 2024.
Okay.
For the, for the consumption of alcohol outside, and that was extended in, sometime in 2022, so.
Right, but that, but that was for the street, and that's separate from what we're doing here, which is an extension of the liquor license to the sidewalk.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's for sidewalk cafes.
Yeah, that's what we're saying, so this is, this is an execution of an agreement for the sidewalk cafe, yes. Councilmember Libby?
I just want to address one thing that Councilmember Hamlet asked about, whether a foot here or there still matters, and I, I just wanted to say I was educated in this process that there is still an ADA compliance process that needs to be met anytime there's any outdoor cafes, so someone in a wheelchair, for example, would need to be able to have adequate clearance to safely navigate that sidewalk.
Okay.
Council President? So just to be clear, though, the 2024 extension, I understood the question as, do we need to go through the extra steps for outdoor dining even though the, since the 2024 extension has been, is still in place? I think that was what, how I understood the question.
Yes, I think we have our own local ordinance that we're complying with to go through this process to make sure that it's in compliance with the city code, handicap, handicap accessibility, all types of things, so that, so that you are still permitted to do that by ordinance, that's what we're doing.
Yeah, let's get, let's get our clerk to weigh in, please.
Through you, Council President, so I think it was maybe three years ago, it was when I first just got on, All My Friends actually extended their liquor license from inside their footprint and extended it onto the sidewalk that is on Maple Street that abuts the premises, so it's two totally different things. The executive order from the governor, that allows them to go into the street, so that's that expansion of premises, in 2024, that is what will end. This sidewalk cafe was approved by council, and it will continue on until they get rid of it themselves.
Yes.
And just to clarify further, that even during the time when, when there were liquor licenses expanded into the street, they still had to go through this very same process. The fact that Murphy has permitted it doesn't mean that there isn't a process that, that we're doing sort of on behalf of the, the ABC, correct?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
We've got head nods on that. Okay, other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the community? Come on.
Hi, my name is Irene Lowshirt. My question is regarding, are there any timeframe limits to this ordinance passing? Like, is it from a particular date to a particular date? Is it from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM? And are they asking for this cafe because there's not going to be on-street dining? Is that the reason why they also need, like, if we have on-street dining, why do they need the sidewalk as well?
Okay, so, yeah.
I just so happen to know a ton about this because I was doing parklets all last year. There is a time limit, it's like until 10:00 PM, you can't be outside of that. I don't know that they're doing this just because of the, the closure of the streets happening, we'd have to, I mean, I could assume that that's probably why. What was the other part of your question?
Oh, what date till what date is this valid from?
I don't think there's a date limit. Yeah, sidewalk cafe, exactly. Sidewalk cafe, sidewalk cafe license is, does not have a.
So the sidewalk cafe is year-round, yeah.
Oh, so like in the winter also?
Yeah.
Okay. And how do they deal with snow on the sidewalk?
Well, usually they just don't. Usually they just don't put up, put up a.
But there are so many rules, it's like you might as well write them all in, you know, to make sure.
Well, yeah, yeah, so you, the sidewalk cafe is allowed year-round because there are some places that keep their tables year-round, you know, and, and most don't.
Okay.
For snow removal and the obvious reasons, but that's, yeah.
So I guess my question is, if there is on-street dining, can they also have the sidewalk cafe?
We, we, no.
No.
No, we're not entertaining closure of streets for the purpose of dining this year.
Okay.
And, and moving forward, what we, related to parklets, what we did do in our ordinance that we passed recently was, it's one or the other, it's parklet or sidewalk cafe, and if you have room for a sidewalk cafe, that is the, that must take precedent.
Over the.
Yes, so that, that, when we passed that ordinance, basically eliminated any possibility of parklets, say, on Union Place, for example, right?
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Other comments from the community? Okay, I think we're ready for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Any.
And this motion carries, okay, thank you very much. We're moving on to Capital Projects and Community Services, Councilmember Libby.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10124 establishes 2023 fees for operating and maintaining our sanitary sewer system. This is something we do annually. This year, there is a slight increase in our fees, but they are still quite reasonable when compared with our neighbors. Costs are up across the board, things like fuel, labor, chemicals, and those are what account for this slight increase. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. On to number two, Councilmember Libby.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10243 authorizes our 2023 submittal of the 2022 tonnage report data to the state of New Jersey. So this is literally a percentage of the amount of our waste, our total waste percentage that we recycle. This is also done annually, and this determines in turn what type of funding we get from the state to support our efforts in recycling. The more that we, the more tonnage we report that we recycle, the more money we get back. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. On to number three, please.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10125 awards a bid to Riverview Paving Incorporated to execute a portion of the Prospect Street Improvement Project in the amount of $515,469.35. This portion of the project includes repair of curbing and sidewalk, extension of the sidewalk network, drainage upgrades, and the milling and paving of Prospect Street from Pine Grove to Blackburn Road. The rest of the paving from Blackburn Road to Morris Avenue will be performed by DPW staff in a cost-saving measure. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Regarding the stop sign that was approved last, at the last meeting, will we be holding off on that stop sign until this project is done? Like, when will we be applying to that stop sign? Some of the residents have asked me recently.
Director Schreger?
Could you please?
The question was, the question was, we approved an always-stop there at the last council meeting, and when will that be, will that be installed before or after the road work? And I'm directing to Director Schreger, yes.
Yes, through you, Council President, the intent was always to put in the four-way stop at completion of the project when we do the final striping and signage at the end, so.
Okay, perfect.
So what do we, so when do we think that this project will be done? Is it like a year, is it six months, is it?
So the timeframe for completion is the question?
Yeah, with this award, assumed six to eight weeks before the contractor starts and six to eight weeks after that when it would be completed, so I just threw out numbers and I don't know how that helps with the date, but, so that's four months out, so probably by end of summer.
Okay, and that's partially affected by materials and labor and weather, so.
Yes.
It's an estimate.
Yeah.
Okay, other councilmember comments? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries, last one, Councilmember Libby.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 10273 authorizes a grant application submission, the 2023 Association of New Jersey Environmental Commission's Open Space Stewardship Grant Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500. The proceeds, if awarded, would provide fencing for the butterfly garden that's already been installed in the park line. This is spearheaded by our environmental commission, and to save on labor costs, they will utilize many volunteer hours to complete this project. I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Okay, comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much, we're moving on to the consent agenda portion of the evening. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion about any of these?
Uh, yes, I'd like, I have some comments.
Sure.
So I'm going to be voting no on the consent agenda tonight, and I wanted to point a few things out that I've noticed. I've been working with our CFO today, and I feel fairly confident he's had to answer 99% of my questions, he does an amazing job every day. A couple of things that were brought to my attention today, one was the bill for $38,000, and that was for Planet Technologies, which is the annual fee for citywide email and Office 365 applications used by the city. So unless anybody wants to weigh in here, share my thoughts.
Through you, Council President.
Go ahead, go ahead. If you want to comment on this, go first.
Office 365 is what we use to send email in the city to each other. It also is SharePoint, sorry, it also is SharePoint how we're going to eventually start sharing some documents in committees. It is, it's, it's, it's way beyond that, there's so many, I mean, PowerPoint we use tonight, Office 360, Office 365, it's an expensive thing, it's tons of licenses, I'm sure that's what it is, I haven't spoken with CFO Baldwin.
That's fine, but when I asked our technology person today what it was for, he explained that it's for, obviously, per email and 365, so he said, what is this $38,000 for? He said, I'm just quoting him here, pull out my email, okay, so we've got Tammy, a copy of you on these emails, contract length is 12 months, initially I thought that this might be inflated, and again, I could be wrong, but I'm going to vote no on the consent agenda because I just have some questions. So it's a 12-month contract, this includes, from our technology person, this $38,000 includes a total of 195 users, 105 email-only licenses, and 90 Office 365 licenses, which includes the email and office license. So for those of you who aren't familiar, you can either download Office under your computer, or if you have an employee, you can give them access, but the minute that employee leaves or is fired or moves on, we lose that access. So when I ran the numbers today on my own, the most, in my opinion, these numbers, they don't make sense, I mean, if you look at, if you look at 90 emails with Office 365, the estimated cost is 999 per user per month. Now, this cost is negotiable based upon volume purchased and number of years purchased, so to give you an example, if you have 90 users at five years with a 20% discount just for a one-time purchase price, you know, if you can get the plan in place for 100 users and discount the services per volume, you know, I recently negotiated with GoDaddy for 20% discount for 80 employees, five-year plan paid in full, regardless of the name of the person, each one is a business professional, so these staggered emails, these numbers just don't make sense to me, and that's why I'm going to vote no for that reason, I'm also going to vote no because I don't, and again, I'm catching up on the Bryant Parkway one-way analysis, and I did talk to Director Schreger about it today, but I'm just confused as to why we're spending money on this analysis when I don't have a good feeling whether or not the neighbors even want this. And again, I'm sure it could be totally fine, maybe I'm just out of the loop, but those two reasons are why I'm going to vote no on the consent agenda tonight, actually I've done enough on my homework. Hopefully, Andy, you're ready to include SharePoint, but I gotta be able to ask the questions before the meeting, and I haven't had adequate answers from our technology member, the numbers just don't make any sense to me, so I'm going to vote no.
Understand, I, through you, Council President?
Yep, yep.
Would we be able to take this item out of the consent agenda as well as the Bryant Parkway one that she mentioned?
No, we've got a motion and a second on the consent agenda, but we can talk about it, we can keep talking about it if we want.
I think that's a great idea, though, Andy.
Yeah.
We've got a motion and a second.
You have a motion and a second.
So.
Discuss it, but you can't.
We can discuss what we want now, and then we're voting on the consent agenda as a whole.
Out of this random curiosity, because I've never been a councilperson, we take a motion, why do we second it before we have any discussion? It's almost like we should take a motion and then take comments, it's like we're seconding it and nobody's actually discussing it.
So, so we go by, we go by Robert's Rules of Order?
Right.
And that's how we run our meetings, so.
They do not, it's in the first.
Generally, what you'd want to do is, is at a meeting before, when you have a consent agenda, when the council looks through it, they could ask to have the clerk separate items out from the consent agenda. from the consent agenda, so there's a separate vote on those items.
Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, what do we do next?
So typically, if there's questions on a consent agenda item or you're, you have doubts, typically, it would be, it would be, you could ask the city clerk to remove it from the consent agenda with the anticipation that there might be discussion and dissent. Also, the opportunity is there between when the packet comes and now to ask questions of city staff. So we're gonna, we're gonna continue to have conversation on the consent agenda, and then we'll vote on it as a whole as we have a motion and a second. So, yes.
Okay.
I would love to hear through you, Council President, about the Bryant Parkway analysis. So I think that's where we were headed. So I'm just curious.
This is the bill about the Bryant Parkway?
Yep.
Okay. Director Schrager?
Yeah, there's about $10,000 linked to Bryant Parkway one-way access.
Through you, Council President. There's a significant amount of history with Bryant Parkway. I may not have all the dates here, just readily available. I can try to get them quickly. But you're looking at, close to 10 years ago, probably started under then-Chief Lucid at some point, with a perceived large amount of cut-through traffic on Bryant Parkway getting to and from 22 and 78. So the initial first step was through police. Turn restrictions were placed, which did minimal to actually deter the behavior, though enforcement was implemented at times. At times, the enforcement was being done while people were continuing to disregard the rules in place. So over the next few years, you know, traffic studies or speed studies were done to determine that, you know, speed humps were not a viable option due to the speed hump laws. Additional studies were done, 2017, 18, which I think was 2019, about just coming up with options to try to alleviate some of the cut-through traffic on Bryant Parkway. I believe we had seven or eight options that were presented to the neighborhood at a public meeting in July of 2019. As a result of that, then it was, it was desired to try to attempt a temporary closure of Bryant Parkway to see what the impact of traffic would be. That also required some upgrades to Orchard and Morris Traffic Signal, which was done just as the pandemic was underway. That, so the DOT did reject our request to implement a two-week closure, just temporarily, just to see what the impact of traffic would be. So we did a 24-hour closure, I believe, in December of 2021, but with the pandemic traffic, the results were somewhat inconclusive. Last year, at some point, the idea was developed to create a one-way street on Bryant Parkway, which would do several things. It would remove some of the traffic, which could reduce the number of vehicles to permit speed humps as an option, but would also help remove some of the current volume that takes place there. A study was done that determined that that is a viable option, but it would require some additional intersection improvements to the Morris and Orchard Traffic Signal. And that's where we stand right now. Right now, we currently have a concept plan developed, which our intent is to send to all residents in the neighborhood of Bryant Parkway, Mead Court, and Edison Drive for feedback. And depending on that, feedback would be to implement a temporary one-way, you know, designation on Bryant Parkway moving west to east, which time that would be evaluated for potentially permanent solutions. That was a lot, but that's.
Seems pretty comprehensive.
Yes.
So doing any of those things, right? Temporary, implement temporary one-way option. The other signal improvement options, several of those things require council approval, correct?
Yes, they would, yes.
Great. So we're not there yet?
No.
Okay.
Does this, anything that Department of Transportation would need to approve prior to that?
Could you repeat the question?
Is there anything that the Department of Transportation would need to approve prior to that?
No, not for a temporary one-way conversion. Union County would need to, and they're on board with what we decide.
Okay.
Council President. So the bill list covers all of the work that Director Schrager was just talking about? That's, this is where that money went?
The study.
Correct. For some of these studies, we do require the use of consultants. I do think we have a fantastic engineering division. We are able to do a lot of these speed studies on our own, but when you get into studying multiple intersections at a time with the camera setups, we just don't have it, and we don't do enough of them for it to be, you know, something worth us purchasing the equipment, which is, could be $10,000.
Got it. And what, oh, I'm sorry. Can I keep going?
Yes.
Okay. Can you hear me, Delia? I'm speaking. Yeah, okay. And why would DOT, under your professional, from your perspective, why would DOT not approve the closure? Is two weeks too long? Is, is that, would it be normal that?
No, they, and I can't be quoted directly, but they, in their rejection or denial letter, they did quote 1960s or 50s law. I don't know, but some law that they use to say, you know, public streets should be the access for all in that situation. So, and that was January 2020.
Okay.
I think just for the purpose of the community's involvement in this conversation, maybe we can focus this conversation on our approval of the consent agenda, and we can, we can talk about the merits of a Bryant Parkway, of Bryant Parkway traffic updates separately at another time. I think, I think what we're, what we're talking about now is the capital, the consent agenda, and approval of the bill list is part of it. And there's obviously lots of expenses related to lots of different initiatives, and I think we want to just separate that out for now.
Right, but we don't want to spend good money after bad, right? If Union County is going to say this is impossible, does it make sense to spend 10 grand? I mean, again, I don't know the answer. I'm just asking.
This is for bills incurred. This is not authorizing spending. So the money's spent. We have, we're authorizing, is paying it now.
That's especially disappointing, because I'm coming in late to this.
Through you, Council President?
Yeah.
Sorry. Aaron Schrager. Was this put out to bid, or was it done through some kind of cooperative purchasing agreement?
So at the, through you, Council President, at the beginning of each year, the engineering division, well, really, at the end of each year, the engineering division puts out RFPs to have professional consultants on call, and then that's awarded early in the beginning of a calendar year. So we have those consultants. You know, some are stronger in traffic, some are stronger in LSRP. So we have those at our, as our use to have them perform some of these studies for us. And that's, those contracts are awarded by council, typically in the second meeting in January.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Council President?
Yeah.
So these, I just want to clarify. These are things that, decisions that have been made by prior committees to move forward, you know, in consultation. You know, the committees are consulted, and, you know, I wasn't on capital projects or safety when this was decided to be done, but presumably, there were council members who had these conversations with our engineers and with the safety. I think we're getting into the weeds here about decisions that have been made in the past. Money has been spent in response to those kinds of decisions. Not every single action that's taken comes to a council meeting, because if we did that, we'd never get anything done. It's, you know, and so I just want to clarify. This has already been decided. It doesn't mean that we're going to close Bryant Parkway or make it one-way. It means that there has been a traffic study done, and we're now paying our consultant who did it. Just to clarify that.
Yep.
Is that correct, Council?
That is correct, yes.
And I was on council in 2019, and I was there at that community meeting. And yeah, this is, this is, we need the information. You know, we need the information.
The new council say that this could be not right. So maybe we just need to say, we're all going to vote no, and vote on this next week. Like, I don't know, like, $38,000 for emails and Office seems like a lot of money to me. Now, maybe this was SharePoint, but maybe it doesn't. So how anybody could vote yes tonight is beyond me.
Through you, Council President?
Yeah. So, Councilmember Fox, and then.
So, Councilmember Hamlet, I would suggest that if you have an issue with this, that you get the packet on Wednesday afternoon. You have from Wednesday to the following Tuesday. And if there's something that is of concern to you, that's the time to deal with it, not in this setting when we've already got.
The public's to know this part.
Excuse me, I'm finished. Let me finish, please. Councilmember Hamlet, let me finish my point, please. I think, you know, this is kind of irregular at this point because the people who need to answer the questions about technology licenses are not here right now to answer them. We're in a position where, you know, we, at some level, we have to trust our professionals to do their jobs. There is a process. You know, perhaps the CFO can come up and talk to us about sort of how things make it onto the bill list. Can you talk to us about that process? Because it's, it's not like anyone can just put something on the bill list and spend whatever they want.
No. Through you, Council President.
Thank you.
What we are agreeing to also on this consent agenda is to pay for services that were already rendered. So what happens is, let's say you're going to buy a hammer, you're going to engage in some service that has been approved, and it may have been approved by a prior council. Maybe it was back in September, October of last year. The services have been approved. The professional provides the services. At that time, we've already engaged with a, it's called a blanket purchase order. So I encumber funds once I know that we're going to engage in this service. There's all kinds of laws about contract limits. This is far under the limits of any bid type of public bid situation. But it does go through a normal process of a purchase order. As the funds are encumbered, somebody in the staff at DCS will submit a requisition to make a payment towards that service. That will then go to the QPA, who checks that it follows all of the purchasing rules and regulations that we have to operate under.
Can you define QPA, please?
Oh, the qualified purchasing agent that is in the finance department. Once she approves it, it comes to me. I look at it to make sure that the funding source is appropriate, that we're paying it from the right area. I then move it along. I sign it. It then goes back to the department, who sends it to the vendor that provided the service. Presumably, they look at the bill. They look at the bill that they're submitting. They look at the amount that it's being, that the purchase order is made for. They sign it and send it back. The department head, which in this situation would be Director Schrager, would sign it. It would go back to accounts payable and make its way to a bills list for approval. So there are several checks and balances as we go through the process. But I think the important thing here is that on the bills list, we're paying for a service that's been rendered. So it was, you know, when we're talking about hammers and screwdrivers and things like that, not a big deal. We're talking about a professional service that was already awarded, and now it's time to pay for that service.
Thank you.
Through you, Council President?
Can I ask a question when you're ready?
Understood. Let's get to Councilmember Miniger first, please. Thank you.
Again, for CFO Baldwin, that process you just told us about, it sounds very, very robust. Throw in our ability to ask questions right when we get the, right when we get the bill list. Ask clarifying, clarifying questions for anyone, but through you, definitely. Is there anyone that has ever evaluated your process at the end of the year? And what does it look like, let's say, the last three years? What did they say about that process? Was it terrible? Or was it really, really great?
Yes, please. Thank you.
So we do have an annual audit. I've been fortunate. In my time here, I've been through three audits so far. We're working on the fourth one. The first one had a couple of minor, something for $2 and something for $5. That was an issue. Those were those two recommendations. The last two years, we've had no recommendations. What the auditors do is they pull a PO listing for the year, for the entire year. It's huge. We send it to them electronically. They used to have enough staff where they would come, and we would show them where all the files were and say, here you go, pull all the PO samples that you want. They don't.
PO being?
Oh, purchase orders, I'm sorry. So in the last couple of years with the pandemic, we have been the ones pulling the purchase orders, me and my staff, and that can take us up to four hours collectively to pull everything for them that they sample. So a sample is not five or six purchase orders. And then they look for the resolutions that authorize the service in the first place. So there's, a lot that goes into, a lot of checks and balances along the way of the process.
Sorry. Through you, Council President. I gotta ask. Oh, sorry. That's not it.
So let's, let's let Councilmember Hamlet ask a question.
Yes. So I don't think anybody's questioning Ms. Baldwin's professional, I mean, I think we all think she's amazing, right? She's been audited, she's done a great job. I'm simply questioning, Councilmember Miniger, the number of users, what I, the information I received today was that we're spending $38,000, a million of my emails, $38,000. One, hold on, a 12-month subscription. Four. Hold my screen now. $38,000. Four. So we're not questioning Ms. Baldwin's process. We're not questioning whether or not she does a great job. We all know she does a great job, okay? This is not about our CFO. This is about license subscriptions, and how do we go back and figure out if this is the right number? So what we're agreeing on tonight is that we've already paid the money. Everybody agrees. This is money that's already been paid out. 105 email-only licenses, 90 licenses for Office, which includes email and Office. If everybody can come back to me and say that our, our technology consultant said we're spending $38,000 on 105 email-only licenses and 90 Office licenses for 365, which include email and Office for 12-month contracts, and that makes sense, I rest my case. But I will tell you, I don't think that's correct. That's why I'm voting no. I'm going to drop it. I won't talk about it anymore.
Okay. We've got Councilmember Levine who wants to make a question.
Can I just say one thing?
Yes, yes, sorry.
So we haven't paid, I just want to clarify that we haven't paid for anything yet. And, and I did, I know that Councilwoman Hamlet was asking me some questions today about the bills list, and that specifically, and that I directed her to our technology expert, And I, I thought that he had answered the question sufficiently, but if he didn't, we can continue that. But the services, the bills list is for, for all of council to approve payment. So it hasn't been paid. The service has been rendered. I don't know if there are any ramifications if we don't pay that bill at this time. You know, is that something that could be looked into in the future? I would have to talk to technology about that. I don't know when it expires. Would that cause all of our emails not to work? I'm, I don't, that part is not my part of the bills list. Mine is putting it together and making sure.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Tammy.
Councilmember Levine.
Tammy, actually, you just answered my question. I was going to ask you if at the time this bill was incurred, we were under a contractual agreement with Microsoft 365. Assuming the answer is yes, are there penalties if we don't pay our bill? I'm just talking about what we need to accomplish tonight at this dais. But my, my second question, you can nod, not come back up. But are we at liberty to do an in-depth exploration into how this contract is structured and what it includes for the future? And consider a renegotiation or looking into it more closely and sharing that in the future? But at the moment, maybe we need to pay the bill that we incurred when we were under contract. That was my question.
That was a head nod, and I know the answer.
It was a yes-no. It set up as a yes-no, so.
I would say yes, because I feel that you're always able to negotiate something. I don't know what our term is on that particular agreement. And so I would defer to IT. But you certainly could, as I said, you might have to pay this bill, maybe not. That's something that IT could help us with.
So, but, so by asking, so by voting yes on this, you could still go back to, to our IT person tomorrow and ask him those questions and possibly renegotiate if it's not, if there's time?
I don't know, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I don't know if there is ample time to renegotiate. I don't know if this is a predetermined fee for this year. I don't know when we currently expire. Those are questions he would have to answer. If you desire to pull that particular bill from the bills list, I wouldn't get into a regular practice of that. It gets very difficult. But if this particular one is an issue, if timing is not an issue for paying it, again, I don't know. You could pull it from the list and let everything else go. That's an option.
Well, I'm not sure.
Not the best one, but.
I'm not thinking it's a good one if, if, if there's a time sensitivity with that.
My recommendation is you guys have done a first and a second. You vote on it. You don't have to vote on the entire consent agenda. So Councilwoman Hamlet could say, I'm voting yes to the consent agenda except for bill. I'll tell you exactly what bill it is. It's a.
Well, it's just the resolution authorizing the bill, right?
Well, yeah, but, but it's, it's, it's the resolution. It's 2300741, Planet Technologies License Renewal $38,000. So any councilperson can vote no on a particular vendor on a bill list. So you can say yes to the consent agenda except I vote no on this. For example, let's hypothetically say that you're getting reimbursed. And one of the, this is a reimbursement to you for an expense. You could vote yes to everything except I'm going to abstain on, you know, 2306448 on that one item. So that's acceptable. But you have a first and a second. I, I think that with license renewals, you know, I can tell you, from my experience, we have hundreds of Microsoft licenses. It's incredibly expensive. I can tell you that my law firm, we don't have a lot of luck negotiating with them because it's almost, you know, monopoly. It's, where else are you going to go to, if you want to use Outlook and things like that? That's what people use. I can't speak to how many licenses you have, but I can tell you, from my experience, it's tens of thousands of dollars every year we pay for that license, Westlaw licensing. And it's per user. It's, so if you have Microsoft on a laptop and you have Microsoft on your desktop, you're paying a separate license for every one of those. But I don't know, you know, my, my recommendation is generally, generally, you would negotiate for a future contract. You wouldn't go back and negotiate a past contract.
So, so I, so, so let's, we have, we have a budget hearing. We have an introduction of a budget, April 18th, at our next council meeting, right? Then on May 16th, we have a hearing on our budget. In the budget will be authorization for spending money on technology, right? And I would submit to the group that that is an excellent time for us to reconsider all of the things that we spend money on, because that is, in fact, the whole purpose of a budget hearing. And so, and so I think, I think we've beaten the bill list a little bit to death. I will ask if there are community or public.
Minimizing it, minimizing it, we're not beating it to death.
I'm going to ask the public if there is comments from the public at this point. Okay, so we've got a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Let's, because I think there's going to be some dissension. Let's do a roll call vote on the consent agenda.
I just want to say one thing.
Yes.
I do not know how much licenses cost, and so I'm not going to guess and pretend. I'm, I'm, I don't, I know that you did a lot more research than I did on this deal, you know, because you're, you have a small business and you understand the licensing. I'm, for me, I'm, I'm going to have to go with trusting what we've been told in the room tonight. But I am willing to look at the contract and if we talk about renegotiating it, you know, moving forward. But for tonight, I feel like even with the Colliers bill, it may be not the same exact things. But the Colliers bill was work that was done, it sounds like, in 2019? The Bryant work, Bryant Parkway?
No, it would have been more like 2022 or, yeah.
Oh, I thought you said it started in 2019. So it's work that's been done. So I, I just wanted to put it out there that it would be definitely something I would want to look at. But I'm confident with as best as I can be, because this is.
I'd like to make a comment when she's done.
Okay. Yeah, I'm done.
Go ahead.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you, Councilmember Allen. I know it's confusing, and I do have a little bit of experience with it. I think the one thing, when you think about your vote tonight, the one thing is what, you know, what Councilmember Miniger mentioned actually makes sense. Just hold off. Obviously, we can't do that. But, you know, Councilmember Miniger is kind of like, well, SharePoint included. Okay, well, that might be great, but when I got the information today from our technology person, SharePoint wasn't included.
Did he say, sorry, did he say included or limited to?
Let's, sorry.
But does everybody understand that you can either have a single office subscription or you can have, or you can download it to your desktop and you get signed?
Okay, I think we've, okay, I think we, we've, we've now made all the points that we can, we've made all the pains, the points that we can make about this. So we're going to, we have a motion and a second on our consent agenda. We're going to do a roll call vote. Please, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Council President Barton. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Fox?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Hamlet? Dr. Levine?
Aye.
Mr. Miniger?
Aye.
President Barton?
Aye. Okay, and that motion carries. So now we're on to the public comment section of the meeting. At this point, council welcomes comments from any member of the public about issues that are not topics on tonight's business agenda. When you come up and you read from a prepared statement, please provide it to the deputy clerk. And to help facilitate an orderly meeting, we ask those to limit, limit their comments to about three minutes. All right, we're ready.
Bob Polowski, how you doing? Three Crestaker Court. I am here again to talk about process and transparency. On February 15th, 2022, the council passed a resolution to close Maple Street, specifically noting that Title 39 required NJDOT approval for any closure exceeding 48 hours. Remember that fact. After that, NJDOT denied approval to close Maple Street because of, quote, "the expiration of certain executive orders." I got that from a memo from Director Schreger to the mayor and the common council. In the same memo, he stated that he would begin the NJDOT permit process and proposed a pedestrian mall instead. Less than two weeks later, council introduced an ordinance for the creation of a pedestrian mall from May to November of 2022 and passed it just two weeks after that. We've gone through the five prerequisites required to legally create a pedestrian mall ad nauseam. And it takes time to draw the required conclusions if you follow an adequate process. The arduous process of getting NJDOT approval, of getting an NJDOT permit likewise takes time. Many moons, according to Director Schreger's April 12th email to Nancy Adams and Mayor Radist. Closing a road for approximately six months, or if you prefer, 4,320 consecutive hours, is a closure of more than 48 hours consecutively, is it not? And if that's true, it required NJDOT approval, right? Did we get NJDOT approval for that last closure? Did we ask for it? Do we have any record of either? Those are questions I'd like someone to answer when I'm done with what I have to say here tonight. This council at times seems to conduct its business, not tonight, but in a frenetic and haphazard manner. At the last council meeting, we heard a presentation about the Continuum of Care Grant Program, which seems like a pretty good program. I did some research, and there's a lot of, a lot more information than Dr. Callahan could possibly squeeze into our limited time for him. It's my understanding that the council plans to vote on whether to sign a contract joining this program at the April 18th council meeting. I respectfully request that you postpone that vote. The first most of us heard about this initiative was two weeks ago. Today is the first opportunity we've had to question the council about the program and what due diligence the council has conducted to make sure this is right for Summit. Two weeks is just not enough time for word to spread and people to engage with the council. Moreover, much of the town is away for spring break, and the council no longer will accept emailed questions, making it even more difficult to participate in the process. Even if we could have meaningfully engaged in such a short time, two weeks from now, just is not enough time for the council to vet our concerns. So I'll quote the greatest council president we've had since Marjorie Fox, who said, "I have respect for the intentionally slow and deliberative pace of government." Let's pump the brakes here. Give the city some time to think and ask questions. Give yourself some time to answer them. Let's all be fully informed and really feel good about continuum of care before putting it to a vote.
Thank you for the comment. Other comments? Come on up.
I looked online, but I couldn't find the answer. Are there term limits for?
Can I, can we just get your name?
Oh, sorry, Irene Lowshirt. Are there term limits for council members, and what are they?
There are not.
There are no councils, oh.
Nope.
Interesting. Okay.
Yeah. Gil?
Just one more, three minutes.
Partly 100,000 stuff.
I'm not walking through the fence. I'd like to make two comments to follow Bob. When it comes to treating homeless in Summit and joining a program that's supervised by the county, I got 26 questions about this, 29. And I'm not going to spend my time. I probably would be cut off anyway. I want to submit these because this, before this is discussed.
Please. We'll make sure that they're sent, we'll make sure that they're sent around to all of council, and, and we'll start them in the safety committee.
Because I have, maybe it's a personal feeling, and it is a personal feeling. When you get the government involved in an issue that's important to take Summit, like homeless, you lose certain control. President Reagan said, "One of the most onerous things is to have the federal government say, 'I'm from the federal government, I'm here to help you.'" I believe in that. I believe we should handle ourselves. I'm going to give you a lesson from 1967. I was the president of the, or the chairman of the substandard housing board. And we had a major problem, Glenwood Place. We could spend every, we could spend seven nights a week talking about it. The town had a choice of getting the government involved or handling it. And two gentlemen, the mayor, Jim Bennett, and an attorney, respected attorney in town, Tip Kenyon, got together and said, "We're going to do this. And we're going to do it with our money, so we control it." They raised, it doesn't sound like a lot of money today, but they raised $750,000 in a short period of time and did Glenwood Place. And the Summit people went back in the, back in there, and they're there to this day. It was a wonderful thing that was done. It taught me, before you ask the government to come in and have all this control, see if it can be done ourselves. What is going on? And these 29 questions are the beginning of it. I'm in favor of local control, local authority to handle things that are local. Not the county, not the state, not the federal government, excuse me. The second, and so I'm not going to read 29 questions, you'd cut me off. But I do want that done. Put off this, don't, don't vote on this the next council meeting. It's too important. It's too important. I hear there are towns paying $1,000 to the homeless and so on. Where are we going with this when you get the government involved? Keep it local, and we, we know, we know it's best for Summit. That's my opinion after seeing these questions, and that's why I asked for these questions. Number two, do I have 30 seconds more?
Sure.
Okay. On the procedure for closing Maple Street, I was here May 3rd when that was approved. And what happened? I looked into it. And what happened was, there was a resolution to close it that was dated February of 2023. What, that was during the pandemic. And what happened is the pandemic was declared, concluded in March. So the idea of closing it, they couldn't get it expedited approval from the state of New Jersey. Undeterred, we then went with pedestrian mall. And to my knowledge, Mr. Markowski, Bob, asked, was, was, did it go to, did the state approve it? I don't think the state did. And that's what I said at the meeting before the hearing. In my notes that I gave to Rosie after the meeting, I said, what I said was this. I don't believe that the state of New Jersey has been consulted or approved to closure. The state had it right. I know this is like Monday morning quarterback. But I was here at that hearing. And, and the pedestrian mall for the future says there are conditions. Here's just one of them. I'm not going to go through all of them. I did that night. You must, first of all, you have to go to the state, which we, I don't think we did. If we did, I stand corrected.
We, we did, and we're at about six minutes, so if I could ask you to wrap it up, please.
And what did the state say?
They did approve. They did approve of our closure last year.
You have that in writing?
So we'll, we can get to that. So we're, we're.
I'm sorry, just to.
We're getting a little late, and it's very hot.
Do we have it in writing?
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please. And we'll, we'll connect you with Aaron. And we have the 26 questions, and we'll get.
Okay.
And we'll follow up with you that way.
Last point, conditions of the pedestrian mall. One of the things that has to be determined was, "Continued unlimited use of Maple Street or part thereof by private vehicles may constitute a hazard to the health and safety of pedestrians." Maple Street has been used as a main artery of Summit for over 100 years. No one could possibly agree with that condition with a straight face. Thank you.
Thank you, Gil. Okay.
Now, may I make a comment?
We're going to keep, we're going to keep it so that members of the community can comment, and then, and then we'll follow up if we want to. Anybody else? Okay. Councilmember comment. So, so I'm going to close the public comment now, and then we'll move to public comments, councilmember comments and new business. So at this point, councilmembers, let's get some new business.
Point and order, please. Just one thing. I didn't mention the area that was handled by the town in 67. It was ready to replace. I didn't.
You did, you did. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to councilmember comments and new business. So I think Councilmember Hamlet has something. Yes?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your comments. And I've been, I was on the phone with Director Schreger about this around, I don't know, 12:00, 1:00 o'clock, because I've been asked a lot of questions. And in fact, I forwarded my over request to the rest of the council today around 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock. I've had a ton of questions regarding official department transportation approval. So I actually just did my own over last week, which I just had the results returned today. And again, I'm learning with the public, I'm learning with my current colleagues. But we did not find anything, or at least the city of Summit did not find any documentation from the department of transportation. Now, again, I don't know if, you know, speaking with Director Schreger, it doesn't sound like, you know, maybe he can answer this. I don't know what the right answer is. I'm just trying to figure out where we're going forward. But my hope of request, because the residents were asking you questions, returned zero results to support camp, and I forwarded that to council for that. So I just be totally transparent in what I know.
Okay. Other councilmember comments? Yes?
I actually have two. First, I don't want this to get lost in the shuffle. On Earth Day, the Parkline Foundation is going to be inaugurating their bridge. And so I just wanted to make sure that people mark their calendar, which is April 22nd. The second thing I do want to say is that the Continuum of Care presentation was, it was enlightening. But I would say that that presentation was much more of an overview. And I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I've spent some time over the last two weeks looking at what continuum care is. There are 16 of them across the state, which actually Dr. Callahan had mentioned. But my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding, there is no cities that, minus Hillside, who has given an application, is participating in the COC for Union County. And as I've gone through, and in fairness, I've not shared any of this information. So I know that Safety has been looking at this. But I just, I need to put out there that I personally would like to ask if we don't have a vote on the 18th of April. I know that we put it out there, but, you know, a couple, few questions I have, and I won't go, you know, in a long dissertation, because I know it's getting late. But some of my questions is, why is Summit one of the only cities actively pursuing a relationship with Union County's COC? Who is going to have expertise on council to manage this process? And I'll share the questions. You know, it's a federal level program through HUD that comes to the state and then uses the city, or I'm sorry, the county, the COC, as a pass-through. So I don't know, when we apply to this COC, who gets the money? How do we decide it? How, are we going to hire a social? Are we going to hire a social worker? There are so many unknowns with this, and my apologies, my back is to you. It's important to me, and I really want to go to Mr. Orin's point, that we have a housing authority in town. Union County has 60-ish nonprofits and organizations combined that help with homelessness. And this particular program is, comes with a lot of strings. And I know that we think that there's no obligation. One of the questions is, is that there are no strings attached, government funding doesn't exist. I've heard from several times that there's no obligation, but in order to meet the needs and get the funding, there's rankings, you have to be able to prove that you're doing certain things with housing, whether it's temporary, permanent. Mr. Callahan had talked about doing a voucher system, so that if we wanted to build housing, we would have access to that funding, and that means we're building housing for vouchers in town. I think it's incredibly complicated. I think we all want to solve this problem. And I think where this, where it starts is that you have, we've all seen a big growth in homelessness. So by no means do I feel like saying no to COC or asking to just push it out. The public deserves a public conversation over this. And to talk about what the details are, and I keep looking at Councilwoman Fox, because I know you've done some work around this. So I just, I really believe the public needs a hearing, time to digest it, time to do the research, understand how this particular program will change the face of Summit forever. And I'll say this, the COC has an executive board committee. There are lots of different metrics you have to meet. We can say that we are not going to say yes or no to certain funding, but I don't know if we're going to have that opportunity once we become a federal program. And there's an executive board, and only one council member can sit on that executive board at the county level. You are now on an executive board of 12 to 15 individuals who are a combination of HUD, all kinds of nonprofits, who are, have their hand in the pot, and it takes the power away from this council. And I feel passionately about this. I wouldn't other, and I, perhaps I should have, you know, came.
Appreciate that.
I understand. I hear you. But I'm imploring you to not vote on this on the 18th. I'm asking for a public hearing. I almost wonder if it would be an ordinance, because there's even housing and development that goes in it. It's true. I will wrap up. And I think that if we really think this is an amazing deal, the nonprofits we have right now that are helping us with homelessness are getting funding. If we think this is such a great deal, there is no reason why we can't have a full month of dialogue with our community to show that it is phenomenal for all the right reasons. And I think that we will get to the right place. So that's the end of my story.
So I want to give, I want to give Councilmember Fox the opportunity to respond. But what I want to do before that is I want to just remind everyone here, I want to remind everybody watching, that every committee of council is working on things, right? All the time. Every committee is working on things. And when they are ready, when that committee decides, we're going to make a recommendation to council that we think there's enough information here that can be digested by the rest of the council, explained to the community, and then voted on, that's when it's moved forward, right? So every committee is doing that. And I think it's important that we just remember as a group that if a committee is not yet ready, it's not necessarily the responsibility of other council members to point that out. You know what I mean? I think, I think what I'm, my point here, my point here is what I'm saying is, we have a lot of things that are in the works. And what I've been hoping that we can do as a council is regularly provide updates to the council, to the community about those things that we're working on, right? And so I think we should continue to do that, but I do want to give Councilmember Fox the opportunity to respond.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to comment as well.
I'm going to give Councilmember Fox the opportunity first, and then we'll make our way around that part.
I just wanted to address some of the things that both Mr. Orin raised and also Councilmember Allen. I'm very disappointed, because this is something that I sent out last week to all the council members, and I didn't hear from anyone until 10 minutes before the meeting that there was concern about this. And, you know, I don't know exactly what Councilmember Allen has looked at, but my understanding is, first of all, we're not signing any kind of contract. All we're doing is filling out a form that is like a name, address, phone number, who are your contacts. Technically, we don't even need to do a resolution to do this. We're doing it as a resolution to engage the public. This is, basically what this gets us, is a seat at the table to have some say in how federal and state and county money is spent on the homeless population. Because we are the fifth highest, we have the fifth highest number of homeless people in Union County, and we get no funds from the state and county. We, you know, and that's not right. We have the housing authority. That's one pot of money. That's totally separate from this. What we have are people who right now are losing their homes, and there is money out there to get them vouchers, to get them funding so they can pay back rent. You know, people who are late on their rent and are facing eviction. There is state money out there that we can get to get them back rent, so they don't lose their homes, so we don't get more homeless people in our community. You know, this is, if we're not at the table, we don't get the money. The way the, right, the way it works right now is that the place where the money goes is Elizabeth, because that's where all the advocates are at the table. And it doesn't, by joining, by being on the executive committee, that doesn't, that's a separate thing. We, and there are no strings attached unless we accept money. So in any decision that we make to accept money, any decision we make to take an action under this and to accept funding from the COC would, again, come back to the council for a discussion and a vote. We can't, you know, Councilmember Vartan is actually going to be the representative, but, you know, if he goes to a meeting and comes back and says, "There's this great grant program, we're going to have to go through a process, we'd have to, council would have to approve applying for this grant." And so it's not that joining the committee is what obligates us to do anything. It's another, it's, what, joining the committee gets us is a seat at the table and an opportunity to tap in potentially to funds, to make contacts with other resources, like social workers, like mental health and drug treatment. I suspect that Councilmember Levine also has some comments on this, so I want to give her an opportunity. But I want to reassure people that by just joining the COC, all we've done is say that we will go to meetings. And that's it. And if we don't want to be in meetings anymore, if we stop going to meetings, we get dropped off the COC. There's no obligation, there's no downside to this that I can see. I'll be happy to look at Mr., excuse me, Ms. Hamlet, I'm talking.
Sure, I can answer the question.
No, no, you can wait till I'm finished, please. So what I was going to say is, we'll take a look at Mr. Orin's 26 or 29 questions, and, you know, we'll make an effort to answer everyone's concerns. But I just, I think people have a misapprehension of what this is bringing, what this process is.
Okay. Thank you. Delia?
I think a couple of things. I think Council President Vartan, there's a bunch of things I want to ask. Number one, in your presentation tonight, you said, "In talking about the homeless, we would quote unquote, 'discuss and authorize the approval of the COC.'" In my opinion, those two things are vastly different, discussing and authorizing approval. All of you got to talk about COC, like you're apparently already our appointed board members. So discuss and authorize approval. That's not discussing, that's you have all decided we are going down this path. Lisa, Allen, and I are just asking to slow the process down. You have all decided, you've gone to meetings in January, February, March. Who's losing their home? Who from Summit is losing their home? Where are the people? Okay, I know people are losing their homes. But you have all gone down this path, and I'd like to ask this question to the city clerk. Would you agree that this contract could have never been signed without the consent of council? That is a question, a question for Mr. Giacobi. This continuum of care has never been looked at by Mr. Giacobi or our, or, or Candy Ballin. They have never looked at this. If we have to match funds, it's going to impact our city budget. They should have to decide that. Mr. Giacobi needs to look at the legislation on that. This absolutely needed, this absolutely needs council approval. This isn't just a contract reason side. And again, you guys have all decided that we're doing this. Greg is the person that's going to be on the board. We're discussing and authorizing approval. You've already decided it. We're just asking to slow the process down. Could have been my Law &amp; Labor Committee. Let the TSO look at it. Let the city administrator look at it. Slow the process down. You guys have all decided this already. The trend is already moving.
Okay, so.
I just wanted to give a quick update on some other things in my committee. If you want to do that now.
So let's, so let's hang on one second. So first of all, when I say discuss and authorize approval, that's typically the process with a resolution. But what's also the process with a resolution is that it starts in a committee, just like everything else we do, it starts in a committee. If it needs to go to another committee, it goes to another committee, and another, and another, until it's ready for council to be voted on, right? So that's the first thing. The second thing is, of course, of course, our city attorney reviews these things. We're, so, so nobody is going ahead until we're ready, right?
So how are we voting on it?
So, so smaller groups of councilmembers, Councilmember Hamlet, smaller groups of councilmembers have to have conversations, right? Because of the Open Public Meetings Act, we can't just get all of us together, seven of us in a room, and hash out what we want to do, right? We can't just do it the way that a business would do it, the way that you want, the way that everyone would want to do it, we can't just do it. We can't just get seven of us in a room and say this is what. Delia, can you let me finish, please? Thank you. So what we do is, we have these committees that we work with, right? So this is something that's assigned to the Safety and Health Committee. Just like, just like Maybe Playground is assigned to the capital, is assigned to the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee, right? We're going to, the first round of report that we got back from that engineer said we should spend $3 million on Maybe Playground. You, Councilmember Hamlet, and you, Councilmember Miniger, looked at it, and I was there too. And it was like, whoa, no, we're not, we're not going to spend $3 million? But the rest of the council wasn't consulted on that. But the point is, that's the work of these committees, right? We trust each other.
Listen, we didn't vote on it, Greg.
So we trust, we haven't voted on it on anything yet. So this is part of the process. The process is, the committees have to review these things. And then there's more work to be done, and then there's other committees involved, and then we come to the full group of council. So that's that.
Council President Vartan, it's never going to law and labor. Our city solicitor has never looked at it, and it has never been in finance, and I would certainly never pass anything with Maybe Playground if it did not go to finance or law and labor.
Right.
There's a process.
Right, that's exactly what, precisely what I'm describing.
So when is it going to come to my Law &amp; Labor Committee?
So, okay, so did you have other updates for us?
I do, actually.
Yes, please.
A couple of questions. I do have an update. We had our annual Easter egg hunt last week. Prior to the start of the egg hunt, there was a free hunt magic show that was free for all to enjoy before hunting, with a couple of surprise eggs. Great job to David Guida. There was over 10,000 eggs on the village greens, spread over separate hunts broken up by age. It was really amazing. Great job to our department there. This past Sunday, the Summit Municipal Golf Course opened. We've already had countless golfers enjoy the greens at the course. Please remember to renew your membership and pick up a new card at the community center. April 29th and 30th, fishing derby. May 13th, pet show. May 20th, AAPI event. May 29th, Memorial Day event. June 2nd, pride event, and June 17th is the Juneteenth event. A couple of other questions that I had, and you can answer these now or later. One is regarding, I had a conversation with Union County Director of Parks today regarding our dog park. The one thing I think we need to think about is, this dog park is within the Green Acres Trust. How are we going to handle non-residents entering our transfer station? We don't have to answer that now, but that is certainly a question that I've been asking. The second question I have is regarding continuum of care. Again, I would ask Mr. Giacobi, how we capable of vote that's not on the agenda? And how do we slow this process down considering the Law &amp; Labor Committee hasn't looked at it? And then the third was, I don't know. The third, hmm, that might have been it. But really was regarding the dog park, I think since we mentioned that that was in your slideshow tonight, that we've accomplished that, I think we have some more work to do on that. I'm not sure how we handle non-residents. I don't think it'll be a ton, but we should certainly think about that since it's Green Acres. There are also some things coming up with Glen Side Field regarding Green Acres Trust, so I think it's something that we have to keep in mind. Also, the relays are this weekend. That's the one thing I forgot to mention. The relays are this weekend at Pet Lock. But I would really just encourage some conversations with Mr. Giacobi around continuum of care again. I don't know how we could possibly vote on this April 18th. We didn't have a Law &amp; Labor meeting today, and I simply can't do it at 2:00 PM a day at the 18th. A lot at stake here, a lot at stake, and obviously, we want what's best for the community, the homeless, everybody. But again, slow the process, pump the brakes.
Okay, thank you. Other councilmember updates? Yes?
A good segue into the dog park. It's been approved by Union County to take place in that spot. That was before my time as a councilmember. We've received bids for the fence. We received them, I think, back in October. And we have our eye on one, and we're just being held up by access to funds. Pending approval of our capital budget later this month, we expect to have access to those funds. The fence is the last thing before it can be opened. And Delia, you bring up such a good point. On my, on my own, what I've inferred from past dialogue with the past committees that have worked on this dog park is that it would just be for Summit residents because it was located in the transfer station. If that's not the case, then it's something that hasn't been explored yet, and I'd be willing to talk through it. But I thought in a sense, it was almost, it was almost a little bit of a benefit to control the, control the use a little bit, to have it just be.
Yeah, unfortunately.
And volume. Because, sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. No, you finish.
So I was going to, that was my point, and my update.
Ms. Hamlet, one of the issues here is that, you know, you're going around.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You talked about process. Let's talk about process here a little bit, because this is infuriating. You've gone around the committees that are responsible for different things. The dog park is being handled in capital projects, and you've just gone to the county and gone around Councilmember Levine, who is the person responsible for this.
I'm sorry, no, I'm going to miss.
No, excuse me, I'm talking now. You've had your chance, and I've had enough of this. Because you keep going around other people's committees, and it creates confusion, and it creates chaos. And now they're diff, you know, the people at the county don't know who to talk to. Do they talk to Councilmember Levine and to Director Schreger, or do they talk to you? You've represented yourself as someone from the city, and they don't know who's responsible for what. Everyone needs to stay in their lane, and it's fine if you have a question. But if you have a question, you go to Director Schreger, you go to Councilmember Levine, you come to me if it's about the dog park. You don't go to the county, because it complicates things. And I, you know, it's, this is getting incredibly frustrating. And just because you'd like to touch something, it doesn't go to law and labor just because there is a legal issue. There are things that go to law and labor, and just because Matt, because our attorney has to review it, doesn't mean it goes to law and labor. He reviews everything that comes out of the council's agenda. So I just want to set the record straight on this, because this is, this is not sustainable.
Can I respond? So first of all, I have spoken with our Director of Parks and Res, Mark. I've spoken with Director Schreger about this. This is actually something that's within my committee, is the Green Acres Trust, and I deal with it quite a bit. So when I really just started thinking about it, I thought, well, geez, the dog park's actually in a Green Acres Trust. So how do we handle this? So it's certainly not me trying to go around anybody in this box. I'm asking questions, and I'm curious. I'm trying to make sure that we're doing our due diligence. And I think Councilmember Levine made a good point tonight. Maybe we weren't aware of that. Maybe we need to change course. She didn't seem too combative about it. I actually had a conversation with the Director of Union County about a bunch of different things, and she was lovely, and it was a lovely conversation. And honestly, this is the last thing on my list. It was, this is a conversation about Green Acres Trust. It's pretty black and white. You have to, you have to bring in all the members of the different community. And that is why we are about to lose Glen Side scheduling, because of the Green Acres Trust. We are about to lose Glen Side scheduling to Union County, because it's part of that same project. So that's actually why I was speaking to her, because we're working with them on different issues. So I certainly wasn't flippant about it. I was actually asking about Glen Side Field and our scheduling process. And that is actually affected by the Green Acres Trust. And that was actually my main reason for discussing the Green Acres Trust with her.
Okay, we're going to go to this side. I, I'm sorry. I look over here.
I know.
I used to sit over here, that's why. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you, Council President. And I am having so many things I want to address here, but I want to begin with Gil Orin's comment about Glenwood Place that is now almost 100% under HUD's operation now as public housing has evolved. And so I And so I think there is no one that wouldn't agree with you, that Summit is a very generous community, and we do not wait for federal or public or county assistance. However, it would be just awful on our behalf to turn away funds that are going to help Summit residents, and that is how public housing has evolved over time. And so I want to link that to the comment that came from Councilmember Allen, who I so appreciate, when you were looking into something that you had concerns about, you gave me the benefit of a phone call to discuss some things that you were concerned about, having to do with something that happened in the past. And I was able to shed more light, and when you asked if I would be supportive of what you had concerns about, I was happy to have that conversation with you and give context. And it is very unfortunate that Councilwoman Hamlet has said she does not want to speak to other council members to get context or understanding. And so I want to thank you for the way in which you conduct business on behalf of the city in a thorough and contextual way, even when there may be disagreement, you'll have the conversation. Because, because unlike some folks, I don't think disagreement is a bad thing. I think it helps us be better to get further information about it. And it is unfortunate when you don't like what you hear, that you take a stand and become unreasonable, and that's what causes problems. And so Councilmember Levine, when you talk about the dog park not being open to residents outside of Summit, that is a, and I don't like to say these words, because it sounds like anything that comes up is silly, but it's a no-brainer that you have to be a resident to get into our, you have to have the permit to get in. And so therefore, that would encourage us monitoring it. And that's the one thing that I do know, as something we can rely on our extremely competent staff to answer those questions, and they're never beyond reproach when you raise something that has a problem. So I want to say, Mr. Giacobi, I could be misremembering this, but I absolutely remember having the conversation with Rosie as our city clerk, and it seems like it should have been in our Law and Labor Committee, where we talked about whether, maybe it was you, Ron, I'm not sure, whether we talked about something needed to be an ordinance or a resolution. And so that means it did come up in Labor and Law about the, the C O C. And so I'm not sure if it was in an informal conversation, but I wouldn't put you on the spot, Nicole, to, to answer for Rosie. But I know that we have an urgent problem in this country, in this state, in this city. And because you don't personally know of people losing their homes, to say that it is not a fact offends me. However, I do know that we will have the opportunity to ask those questions in great detail, and it is unfortunate when we cannot be civil enough to speak to one another and hear one another out, and only say you want to do things by writing, and then come in front of council. You can actually do business that way. You absolutely can do business that way, and it would grind this city to a halt, and I know that we, I like that the person asked us there's term limits. We would absolutely have those term limits that would be carried out by those who vote for us. And so I, I, I think I wanted to say something about historic preservation, and, but I've, I think it's not important at this moment. We'll get to hear more about some of the ideas that HPC has with the program that they are doing with recognizing, with recognizing residents. But I did just want to lift those up, Council President, so thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Other council member comments?
Just want to say one, just one point.
Yeah.
So I brought it up tonight because two weeks from now, we have a big decision ahead of us, and I just, I just want to say that if something isn't ready, because you said if it's not ready, we'll keep deliberating and talking about it, I feel like it must be ready if it's going to be on our council agenda on this second. So that's, I, I do have to agree that I feel as though this decision has been made, and that's my sense of urgency. I just, I think the public deserves a conversation, and I don't think we should be voting on it in two weeks. I just want to leave it at that.
Okay. Other council member comments?
I'd like to just make one.
What point, please?
Councilmember Allen, I, I sent the information around a week ago. No one called me, and, and, you know, no one contacted me or Councilmember Levine, or Councilmember Vartan, or Council President Vartan, or, or Mayor Rades. We were, we're the people who've been attending these meetings. There were, there were lots of opportunities to have a conversation in that week. So I feel a little sandbagged that 10 minutes before the meeting is when you tell me that you have a problem, and that you want to push it off. That, you know, I, I did this with the, with the intent that we could, you know, that anyone who had concerns could raise them, and that's, I think it, everyone, you know, I know people are busy, but it's really not right to, you know, to say this as if you've been left out of the conversation when I sent something a week ago. And in fairness-
Okay. No, can I, I would like to respond, no, I hear you, and I appreciate that, because I do try to make phone calls ahead of time. This has been an ongoing discussion with, whether you call it a working group or a task force, you guys are on that task force, and this has been a discussion or working group since January. And two weeks ago, we sat here for a 10-minute convers, for a 10-minute presentation, and Dr. Callahan answered as many questions as he could, so it was a 20-minute conversation. And so I apologize if you feel sandbagged, because I appreciate that I would want a phone call too, but I was a little frustrated that, and you'll take my call, so I'm not saying that you wouldn't, but when I see emails that there's been comprehensive education and dialogue happening, and we have been left out of that conversation for two months, and you expect me to know something within three weeks, and it's a complicated program, I feel a little sandbagged. And so, you know, I actually said to you 10 minutes beforehand, because I didn't want to walk into this room with you totally sandbagged, because I really was going to do that. That's how upset I was. But you know what, Councilwoman Hairston is right, I don't want things to come to a screeching halt. I want a relationship with my, my colleagues, and my sons are sitting out there watching tonight, and I asked one of my sons, "What would you do? How do you want me to act?" Because I was very frustrated. Sorry.
I want to give you some additional information through you, Council President, that one of the things that I'm not sure you're aware of, is that this has been a conversation that's been happening in the interfaith, in the Mayor's Forum on Diversity, and one of the things that we can avail ourselves of is conversations with those members of the community, and, and for our own edification. And so that is why I am so looking forward to you bringing forward, Councilmember Allen, the, the ideas and solutions that are coming from our Assembly at the state. And we really have to take an approach, when we have an urgent matter, that there should be some ideas that you can bring to us that are not slowing down something that is a big concern in this city, and it has been. And so I just want to make that opportunity available to every council member, because there have been, as someone pointed out, many nonprofits who are working on, on this, and it is not a new issue, and it became extraordinarily harmful when the protections that were in place because of the pandemic lifted. It is at a crisis level for people. And so I am grateful for our mayor and for our city council, who have looked for proactive ways to not allow people to suffer in silence, because those of us who have the benefit of a home over our head and meals and, and other safety net issues, that this council, this mayor, and these nonprofits are being very proactive about it. So I just wanted to make sure that it is not a bad thing if feels comfortable, uncomfortable for us to disagree, we need to raise it, but we do have to talk to one another and do our homework as individuals, not representing the city as if we have that authority. We don't. But I do know that there are other ways for us to get information.
I'd like to make one comment, may I?
Please.
Through you, Council President, thank you. So just a history lesson, and how I became part, or one of the people on council to have what you refer to as, as a more comprehensive education on this very complex topic, I just queried my calendar, that's why I was looking at my phone, the Mayor's Forum on Diversity. It was December 6th of 2022. She called, I was a brand-new council member, and she called the meeting, and she said, you know, the, things with the homeless population in Summit was, was getting to a fever pitch, the levels with the new overnight hospitality that the Summit Warmhearts and the other nonprofit and faith-based groups were running, had the highest numbers ever, and there were so many concerns, there were safety concerns, train station concerns, and she really rallied all, everyone from the community together, all the groups that had a vested interest in helping this population, and that was December 6th. So I came, and it was an open meeting, so there was, there was more than a quorum there of us. There, I remember all the people came, in fact, Councilmember Hamlet, I actually, am I correct that maybe you were even there as an elected, the council member-elect? I think you actually came to that. It was in the Whitman Room. I remember thinking, oh, how neat that Delia is here. Anyhow, so there were many of us there, and the Mayor's follow-up email to us in the group and everyone who attended was, you know, "We're having a follow-up group, this is what, this is what we accomplished, these are our plans." And she said, "Council members, let me know if you're interested," to all of us, and she said, "We can only have three of you there." So I, of course, wanted to raise my hand, and I responded to her right away, I said, "I'd love to come, but, you know, I'm new, if anyone else of my senior colleagues prefer to be there, they can have my spot." She got back to me a few days later and said, you know, "I think, I think just a couple of you said you're coming, so you're, you're in." And that was how it happened, and I can, I can verify that every which way. So that is how it happened, that I became one of those privileged for you to then absorb this education. And yes, we've done quite a bit, and I've always been deferential to her as my mayor to not give these updates during the council member updates. You know, she provides sporadic updates, but this is something really neat that she was doing, and really left it to her to give the updates. But looking back, I would like to concede publicly that I now wish I had said, hey, I went to meet this woman, Julia Arma, Julia Orlando in Bergen County, and spent three hours there one day, because she did the unthinkable, the insurmountable, she solved this, this insurmountable problem of homelessness, got Bergen County to zero chronic homeless people, zero. And we wanted to see how she did it. So a few of us went, spent the day, and I, you know, I was like this to raise my hand and, and, you know, say it, now I really wish I had, because that's pretty neat, and there have been things like that. But I wanted to just give that history, that this was something very much open to anyone interested, and it was something personally that I was very driven to address as a council member, because it was something I had worked on before, coming to council, and then there was this new frontier, how can we harness the power of the municipal, municipal government to help this problem? Because in Summit, we are relying on nonprofit, one professional organization, you know, Bridges, maybe there's another or two, but then it's really nonprofits and faith-based groups, that all their funding comes from private donations, and we get very frequent notifications, like, hey, we can have overnight hospitality tonight, and now it's closed, but during the winter, unless someone makes, donates this much money, or like, our, our, you know, the residents won't have dinner tonight unless someone donates it. And they are, they were literally living like dollar-to-dollar with some of that. So I just wanted to give that history. And also, the members of the community that came to all these meetings that just started December 6th, at least for me, there are names you all know, pillars of our community, leaders of our community, who are doing extremely amazing work and very important work in this area. And each of them, and I will never speak for anyone, but when we shared our interest in joining the C O C, everyone was like applauding, thinking, hey, this is, this is great, I'm so glad Summit is, is really going to get involved in that way. So I'm wondering, so yes, I wish I had shared more, we had shared more, that would have actually been really handy, maybe we should have. Or I, I think that we should have, but also, how can we get some of these other community members to come and share some of their point of view and their experience, so it's not me saying it, it's them saying it? I think that might actually be neat, too. So that's what I wanted to say.
Okay, I want to, it's after 10 now, so I want to wrap up, I want to wrap up the conversation by simply saying that this is one of the plethora of extremely important topics that is being considered by one of the council committees, right? Every council committee has something important that's being considered, and this is going to continue to be considered in Safety and Health, and other council members are going to have the opportunity to review materials, and to educate themselves, and to speak to whomever they need to speak to, to feel like they're ready to vote on this. And so we will continue to go along in this process, and I want to just, I think, leave it there for now.
Councilwoman, I'm just, are you saying we're going to vote on the 18th?
I don't know that, yeah.
Okay.
I, that would be my extreme preference, would be to vote on the 18th, but I think if there's a majority of council members that say to me, "I don't think we're ready yet," then I don't think we should. That's, that's where I stand. So that's my position. So let me ask one more time with the hope that the answer's no. Any council member comments or new business? Okay. I think at this point in the meeting, we're ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.